And so I was asked to stake the thing out and I was wondering why the driveway was going up the other way, but that's the way it was permitted and it's been there since the subdivision was created. The subdivision, the original subdivision, was done in the registry of deeds. It has subsequently been filed in the land court and it has been decreed. In looking at the certificate of title, there are no rights that have been granted.
Okay. You seem pretty cut and dried. The one problem we have, and I usually go to the board for comments. You've been coming before us for a number of decades. You and I go way back. You're a smart man. You've given us the impression that you have frontage when you don't. So you really don't have the right for a subdivision. And I'm a little upset that you wasted staff's time running around town hall getting all these answers to questions when you need to go to the ZBA, not here. I'm gonna make a motion to deny this and I hope the board will give a second and we can discuss it. Okay? I apologize. It's a lousy way to go out for dinner, but I'm not gonna subjugate our own rules for a Mickey Mouse subdivision. I'm sorry. Could I have a second, please?
Show move.
Thank you. It's on the floor for discussion. Anybody else would like to talk to the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Years ago, we spent a lot of time on the rules and regs relative to subdivision, A&amp;Rs and what have you. And as I recall, at that point, we wanted to make the rules and regs something that people could live with, developers could live with, not too stringent. And I think we were able to do that. And this A&amp;R that comes before us tonight-
It's not an A&amp;R. It's a subdivision.
Sorry, subdivision. This subdivision that comes before us tonight is, goes against the grain of what we tried to do originally. And I think that my concern would be setting a precedent by going forward with this that would lay the foundation for anyone else to come forward and say, "Look at what you did for Old Hyannis Road." I have a long history with the town of Yarmouth. Having started my career working here, there are a number of roads in this town that have been extended for the purposes of getting 50 feet of frontage. That's all that was done for. This is being extended only so that they can meet the 500-foot requirement from the road.
I agree.
The other option is to go with an A&amp;R plan and go to the zoning board of appeals and have the zoning. However, as you're aware, we're looking for, you would be looking for a variance. And a variance, you must show that you have a hardship and the hardship must be based upon either soil, shape, or topography as to why you cannot conform. This plan clearly shows that it can conform.
And we have a motion on the floor to deny. Anybody else who wants to speak to this?
My question to the chairman, didn't we just approve to a rental apartment and a owner-occupied dwelling on the same lot in our most recent round during, and just approved at town meeting?
It wasn't approved at town meeting? You mean the accessory dwelling unit?
Yeah.
It failed at town meeting?
It failed.
Oh, all right.
So we don't have, I think it would've been a potential option.
It would've been possible. Okay. My other comment has to do with the point that Mr. Brandalini brought up, that with the layout, there are no notations on here as to sideline dimensions, et cetera. So in many ways, this is a very incomplete plan.
We had given Mr. Brandalini a plan that showed him what the setbacks are on that.
Showing and being able to show in specific dimension are two different things.
Normally, the land court requires that you must locate a building if it is in close proximity to the line. In this case, they're all, none of them are close to the line and they're all well over the minimum setback requirement.
Well, that's not clear.
We'd be happy to furnish you with the same offset plan.
It would've been-
This is just a preliminary at this point in time.
It would've been helpful to have seen that now.
Right now, I believe this is, there's a project number on this thing that's about 2,000 and something.
Twenty-eight sixteen.
Yeah. We're working on project number 8,000 and something right now. It's from a very old version of AutoCAD. Tried to get a PDF off of it and it's such an old version that we had deep trouble trying to do that. The plan that we gave to the building commissioner and his assistant to show the setback requirements, I can't somehow adjust what's called line type scale. The dimensioning is absolutely huge. We'd be happy to furnish the plan if you want to continue it, if you want us to request a continuance, to give you that information, we'd be happy to do it.
Anybody else want to comment before we call the vote?
Mr. Chairman, is there any value in denying without prejudice?
They'd have to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay.
Denying it doesn't do anything.
No, my point is, when we're saying we're denying, we're just saying that right now, we're not opposed to the plan per se, but it doesn't, you know, you need to do something else in order to get approval.
And it's outside of our bailiff because he doesn't have the necessary frontage. He's giving the illusion or the impression that he has with each drawing, but he clearly doesn't. So he has the right to withdraw. Would you like to withdraw or do you want him to call the vote?
My, in order to go to the zoning board of appeals, I have to have a denial of some kind.
Okay.
Okay, that's the bottom line. If I go to the zoning board of appeals, quite frankly, an A&amp;R plan is much simpler to do. However, we're gonna have to show hardship based upon soil, shape, and topography. And I can show you on that plan that I can make it work.
You're a very talented man. I'm sure you've got it going. Do you want to say anything before we call the vote?
Yeah, I think it's denying it based on you not constructing anything.
Right.
If you actually wanted to construct a road, that's something that would probably be something that the planning board could approve. So the denial here with the motion, I think is something that you need to explain very clearly why you're denying it. And there's some language in the memo and maybe we can amend.
I didn't see that.
Yes.
Because you're simply, you are, it is illusory frontage because you're not creating any of the road. It's almost a paper road that you want to create to, in a sense, move the street to meet the zoning bylaw. And I do agree with what Brad was saying, that you're looking for relief from the zoning bylaw requirements and that should be sought through the ZBA and not through the creation of basically a fake subdivision. So I just want to be clear that if you wanted to construct something, that might be viewed differently by the planning board than what you're currently proposing, which is just to create the right-of-way limits but not construct anything.
We'd be happy to go to the zoning board of appeals and take our chances there, but realize that I'm not seeing that we meet the criteria for soil, shape, or topography. If you want to support us in our petition, we'd be happy to have your support.
Does anyone, do you want Tom to read? I didn't know, I didn't see this in your-
I think we need to amend the motion so that if, because you need to, if you're gonna deny, you need to clearly identify why you're denying it and this gives you some language if the board feels that that's the way they want to go.
The other thing that, so the rest of the board knows, as a result of filing a preliminary plan, whether you approve it or deny it, they still get zoning protection. In this case, it doesn't matter because there's no zoning anticipated. And the fact that we filed a preliminary plan also gets us protection under what's called Chapter 111, Section 127P, so long as we bring a definitive plan in at some point in time in the next seven months, that protection also. And that's from changes from any environmental code of which I don't know of anything's being proposed anyway. But the approval or the denial of the preliminary plan doesn't change the fact that it still holds the zoning.
Mr. Chairman, in keeping with Kathy's comment about construction, the entrance to the existing path, if you will, to access these buildings back here, in order to have a proper entrance from Old Hyannis Road, this is gonna require construction in any event. It is a very difficult location, a lot of boulders and other things are gonna be moved. And most of the construction is gonna be within the transmission right-of-way. The concept of making this a roadway makes sense if you're gonna approach it from the construction side of things. It would at least eliminate the idea of having one of the property corners of the neighbor in the middle of the roadway. I mean, it's, talk about who's encroaching on who. So there are a lot of issues here that really, I would think, need to be rethought.
Okay. Do you, is it okay if Tom reads your comments?
I think if Tom can make a motion to amend the motion outlined.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion.
Second.
Well, he's gotta read what it is.
Go ahead.
The preliminary plan as proposed is not consistent with the intent and purpose of the subdivision control law and would require waiving of the most or all of the required improvements outlined in the Yarmouth Rules and Regulations governing the subdivision of land. That kinda says it all in a sentence.
Do you want to not say the rest of it?
Well, if you feel as though it should be in.
I need to give a reason. If that's sufficient to the board, that's fine.
Okay.
Now, keep going.
The plan creates illusionary frontage for the sole purpose of meeting zoning bylaw, Section 203.2.1, to allow the creation of two lots. Relief from the zoning bylaw requirement should be sought through the proper authority, which is the zoning board of appeals, and not through the creation of a Fox subdivision.
Now, I'll second it. Thank you for typing that, I didn't see it. I was just looking at the plans. Thank you. Any more discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
There we go.
I apologize. I wish you good luck and I hope you knock it out of park. You're a very fair man.
If not, you'll see us back. Actually, you'll see us back one way or the other.
All right.
Right.
Well, hopefully you can make it work.
So, I'm gonna take this as the denial to go apply to the ZBA with the A&amp;R plan.
Yep.
Technically, it's supposed to come from the building commissioner, but just-
It's supposed to come from the building commissioner?
He's the one that's gonna deny the permit.
We will, as a planning board, make a formal denial of your preliminary subdivision, which will be recorded with the town clerk, as well as you will get a copy of it.
Okay.
It's not through the building department.
My question, do you want me to bring the A&amp;R plan, which is already drawn, in for you to endorse it and have me note on that they don't conform, or do you want me to go to ZBA first?
You should go to ZBA first, in my opinion. Typically, what we've been requiring is people to go to the ZBA and then to document on the A&amp;R plan, the petition number and the book and page with which it's been recorded. That's very clean and clear to people that how it was allowed.
Because it's land court, it's gonna be difficult to find the stuff.
That adds to complications, unfortunately.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Have a nice evening.
Good luck.
Recap of the annual town meeting.
I didn't know if anybody wanted to talk about it. A little therapy, or whether you're okay with it.
Withdrawal, perhaps.
Withdrawal. I think the only thing that didn't pass, as we mentioned, was the amendments to the accessory dwelling units or accessory apartments. And I think, unfortunately, I think it's very complicated because I think half the people who voted against it thought it went too far and half the people who voted against it thought it didn't go far enough. So I'm not really clear on any direction that the planning board would have to move forward with this, although a petitioned article has been discussed by some people.
And I read, and I read the script so very nicely.
You did, you had it, my friend.
Yeah, and it didn't carry.
Been a little problem with our first PowerPoint slide, but-
It didn't carry. I guess we've licked our wounds enough, we're okay. Meeting minutes.
I did submit this information to the AG's office, just so you know.
Meeting on May 4th, that was, uh, May 1st. That was a quick meeting, right? That was, yep, that was a quick meeting.
Motion approved, May 1st meeting, 2019.
Second. We have a motion on the floor, any comments? Minutes are perfect, as always. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
One abstention.
Motion on the May 4th, approval of minutes.
Second.
Have a motion on the floor, all, any more comments? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
Okay. Thank you again, Kathy, for all your hard work. And I'm sorry, Mr. Robin, wasted your time.
Thank you.
I know, I could tell you put a lot of time into it.
You never know, I don't know how you guys are gonna feel about stuff, so I want to give you as much information as possible to make your decision, so.
Board of Appeals, you sent something out, was it yesterday or Friday?
It wasn't yesterday, it must've been Monday, yeah. There was a couple decisions and then the agenda for the next meeting.
Committee updates. Any updates from anybody? No? And is Joe all right? Is she just away or is she not feeling well?
She didn't, okay, she was just, let me know yesterday that she-
I can give you a partial update from the RAC committee relative to wastewater. Lee is our representative from the planning board, but I serve as the Bass River representative as well. And we're looking at the regional agreement going before the legislature within the next, maybe two to three months to get approved. And at that point, we're gonna be looking at funds relative to design and engineering work for Phase 1, and that will go over a period of a year or two. It's kind of a gray area because all of the input isn't in from the three towns. They're just weighing a lot of the situations. There's a public meeting coming up at the cultural center, June 24th. That's a Monday at 6:00. And that would be interesting. We're gonna have a slide presentation along with speakers. Program will be about an hour, Q&amp;A after, and hopefully, general public can attend. We've invited four organizations from the area, and so we should get a pretty good turnout.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board member items. Correspondence, are we getting any more hate mail? Or is that dropped off since town meeting?
It's dropped off since town meeting.
Okay. We were so popular for a while, we just like, lots of notes. Staff updates.
We are having a meeting tomorrow for the Bass River Bridge to talk about aesthetics. I think some of you have been coming to them, so that's tomorrow at 10:00. And it's over in Dennis and there's gonna be representatives from Dennis there as well. So hopefully, the designers will have some plans or ideas of ways that they can incorporate some improvements to the bridge, based on our last meeting, things like overlooks, entranceway treatments, different types of railings that could make things look a little bit nicer. The municipal vulnerability preparedness final report has been completed and is on the town website, if anybody is interested in that. We will be submitting that to EEA for their approval to become a formerly designated MVP community, which opens up a lot more grant opportunities and also improves our standing on other grants that we apply for, who actually ask that question with whether we're an MVP community. So that's progress that took a whole year and I thank all the people out there who went to that long workshop meeting and came to the listening session. It was very, very helpful to have that. The Parker's River Bridge is moving forward. It should be out to bid in the central register tomorrow, with the bids package available next Wednesday, which reminds me, I need to update the board's selectmen on that. And then we will be having a pre-bid meeting later this month and then hopefully, we'll bid opening on July 24th. We will not have our access permit prior to going out to bid, but hopefully, we'll have a draft version of it during the bidding process, so the contractors will be aware of that. So if everything goes well and we have enough money and we have a good qualified bidder, we should start construction after Labor Day.
All of the easements have been-
Yes, sir.
Put in place?
Yep. It's been a bit of a struggle because it's not a MassDOT project, it's a town-led project with DER and a bunch of other state and federal partners as a title restoration project. And it is very important for our wastewater component, but it's being done as a permit project through MassDOT. And they don't normally do huge bridge projects that way. Normally, they do it and they have a project manager and they have all their internal processes that go through. So it's been a little challenging getting through that. We have completed the Route 6A, initial series of public input meetings that we had, and we're compiling the comments. We didn't really come to a lot of consensus. It was very well attended. I was very impressed with the number of people that came out and the number of different comments that we got. It was like exactly what we were looking for, but there really wasn't a lot of consensus on what a preferred concept might be. And a lot of other items were brought up with regard to like maybe undergrounding the utilities or looking at the Route 6A and Union Street intersection or the Willow Street intersection, maybe thinking that those need more work than maybe some of the physical improvements that we had been looking at.
Didn't they talk about sidewalks as well?
Yes, I mean, that was the emphasis of the review that has been done recently or the visualizations, was really improving pedestrian access, improving the crosswalks, maybe doing a little bit of improvement in the village area, kind of more of a sprucing up, all in conjunction with a water main replacement project that's gonna need to happen along 6A in the near future. They have a lot of breaks, a lot of problems in that area. So the idea was, well, what else can we do when we're rebuilding the road or rebuilding an area from the water main? What else can we do to spruce up the area and make it look a little bit nicer? But I think we're gonna basically summarize the information and maybe meet with the board of selectmen in trying to get their input and maybe some guidance on how they'd like us to proceed on that.
I thought the suggestion for a little, for that horse-
Trough.
The horse trough right at the intersection of Summer Street, the way that the architect was explaining it and moving it to the opposite side of the intersection and making a little pocket park out of it, it was a very nice treatment that was being proposed. What was surprising was the vehemence of the people who didn't want anything like that. It just, it just didn't make that much sense to see a willingness to do something neat, something that would be a benefit, rather than just the way it is now, actually sitting in, within the highway right-of-way but unusable from its original purpose. So there was a good effort, I thought, to make it reasonable and it was rejected out of hand.
It was interesting, it was a very interesting, diverse number of comments. People coming at from very different angles and perspectives. It was very good.
The reason why is where the horse trough is, it's very historical and there's a dedication there, you know, from the village people. And they don't want to move it. I mean, I think they want to protect it, you know.
Understood.
There's some geometry around it and, you know, right now-
Well, that's another, that's another option, sure, sure. But the suggestion was made in good faith and it was so roundly rejected. It was, you know-
Don't touch it.
Yeah, don't touch it. So we've gotta go back to the drawing boards on that one.
But I, one comment I'd like to make, though, I made a comment, I spoke in public about the underground utilities. And I know that, I think it was the consultant that said, "Well, you know, the town's gonna have to pay for the design and..." So what?
Yeah.
So what? When you look at what those poles look like and the fact that every time somebody hits a pole, everybody loses electricity and people get hurt in the process.
I think one of the good things that might be, might come out of this is, well, maybe we need to hire VHB to write a memo on what's truly involved with undergrounding the utilities. They've done it recently on some other projects.
Million dollars a mile.
It's more than a million dollars.
It used to be rough, yeah.
It's like five.
Really?
Yeah, it's very expensive because you have to connect all the houses and once you touch, and this is my understanding, and once you touch the individual electrical in the house, that has to be brought up to code. So I think that there's some, it's not that it's impossible and it gets done, but it's not, this isn't something that's gonna happen in two years or five years. It's probably take a little bit longer than that and it will cost the towns some money that just, the townspeople will have to decide if that's how they want to spend their money.
You know, they say it's expensive and it is, but it, in the long run, between the safety and aesthetics and-
Maintenance.
And the inconvenience and the maintenance and everything else, believe it or not, it's not a big deal. It really isn't. You put a duct bank in, you put extra ducts in. You'd have to put ducts in for your cable and, you know, telephone or whatever, but it's not a hard thing to do. And it's not, I don't think, it's that expensive. I mean, I was involved in several projects where we did this and we did it in historic districts and people were more than willing to do it.
It could look really, really nice. It really could. At least, you know, and maybe it's a certain segment that gets done first through the village center.
Long-term program, yeah.
Yeah, with a little bit of more of a long-term program. I mean, we do have a big infrastructure project coming up called Wastewater, so I don't know where all the funds are gonna come from that.
Yeah, but wastewater isn't gonna go to 6A.
No, it's not.
Well, not-
For a while.
Not that portion of 6A.
Not while I'm alive.
Not in the plan scheme we have at the moment. But one other comment I would like to make is, I think on the south side of that strip, I kinda looked at the area in terms of sidewalks and I really think you can put a sidewalk almost continuously along there. There are a few problems where you gotta put the sidewalk around a tree and get some, get an easement or something like this. But having a sidewalk, especially in the village area from, say, the congressional church and the library all the way to Willow Street, is a really good idea. I mean, the activity that goes on there several times a year where we have strolls and other things, other activities in there, it really encourages people also to walk the village. And there's a lot of people who walk it, even though there's no sidewalk there. And it's kind of dangerous.
It's dangerous on the north side, on the sidewalk at times when the sidewalk's lower than the road and there's no-
Right.
-green strip or anything.
Right, sidewalks need to be raised and there's a bunch of things there that-
I would echo what Lee has said about sidewalks on the south side, too. From the plans that were shown, there's certainly enough room to, for, at least a three-foot sidewalk, possibly even a four-foot sidewalk. But it would enhance the-
possibly even a four-foot sidewalk, but it would enhance the captain's walk, the access to any of the properties through that area as well.
Yeah, the problem is, is that if you're constructing a sidewalk now, a three-foot sidewalk doesn't cut it. You could possibly have a four-foot sidewalk, but every 200 feet or something, you'd need a five-by-five turnaround, so if someone's in a wheelchair, they'd have an opportunity to turn around. I think at one of the meetings, someone identified that the sidewalk that's up there now had gotten done as some type of repair project, and it was a very, or a maintenance project. It wasn't done as a full-blown project where you'd have to meet all the regulations. I don't think you'd get away with that today.
Well, just last, just last year, there was an extensive sidewalk project on the Barnstable side. They did, they extended their sidewalks right up to the town line.
They did, and I believe that was done as a maintenance project, and that might be a possibility, but that's of an existing sidewalk. To try and create a new sidewalk on the south side, calling it a maintenance, might be a little bit different.
No, there were new sidewalks being constructed.
Oh, interesting.
It's not, it's safety.
Yeah.
That's the issue, safety.
That's a good point.
I've got to move this along just because, as I said, I've got a queasy stomach, and I don't want to have a problem there. So upcoming meetings, we have June 19th and July 3rd, question mark. Are we going to pull that one, it's on the docket, just in case we have business?
Yeah, I don't have anything right now for the 19th or the 3rd. Typically, we don't.
Summer schedule.
Summer schedule. Woo-hoo! So I'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Call for a German?
Should I move?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for having a quorum here tonight.
You bet.